Well, good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order this Tuesday, April 30th, regular meeting of the Pierce County Council. The time is 3:02 PM. Madam Clerk, will you please call the role?
Yes. Councilmember Campbell.
Here.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Councilmember Denson.
Excused.
Thank you. Councilmember Herrera.
Here.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Here.
Councilmember Morell.
Here.
And Councilmember Mello.
Here.
You have six members present, Mr. Chair.
We have six members present and a quorum. Item number three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag in our Land Acknowledgement. Today's moment of silence after our Pledge of Allegiance is dedicated to the four law enforcement officers who lost their lives in the line of duty yesterday in Charlotte, North Carolina, as well as the four additional officers who were wounded. Sam Palosche, William Elliott, Joshua Ayer, and Thomas Weeks sacrificed their own lives while protecting their community. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance to the flag led by Vice Chair Campbell, followed by a moment of silence dedicated to the four officers who lost their lives and the four officers who were wounded in Charlotte, North Carolina, and then the land acknowledgement read by Vice Chair Campbell.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for For our land acknowledgement, we acknowledge that we are on the traditional homeland of the Coast Sahelish tribes. Coast Sahelish people have lived on and stewarded these lands since time immemorial and continue to do so today. We recognize that this land acknowledgement is one small step towards true allyship, and we commit to uplifting the voices, experiences, and histories of the indigenous people of this land. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Right, section for approval of our agenda. Is there any objections to approving today's agenda as presented? Seeing no objection, the agenda is approved. On today's council agenda, there will be multiple opportunities for public comment. On the consent agenda, you may provide comments on any final action item. This does not include items placed on the consent agenda simply for introduction and scheduling. On today's consent agenda, there are two appointments up for final action and therefore public comment. During sections eight and nine of the agenda, we will take public comment on each ordinance and resolution individually. And finally, in the community forum, there will be an opportunity to address the council on any topic that is not on today's agenda. For information on the rules for public participation, please review the bottom of page one of today's agenda. That does bring us to section five, the consent agenda. Any member wish to pull an item from the consent agenda?
Vice Chair Campbell. Chair, I'm not seeing any of our appointees here, Amy Boucher or Michael Stewart, not seen in the room or online, so with that, I will move the consent agenda as presented. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stewart. And C-2B?
C-2B, thank you.
So ceremonious.
Chair, I wish to amend the consent agenda to move C-2B to section nine of our agenda and move the consent agenda as amended.
Is there a second? It's been perfectly moved, so we adopt the consent agenda with the exception of moving item C-2B to the regular meeting under resolutions. This is a public hearing on the remaining items on the consent agenda. Does any member of the public wish to provide comments on the remaining final action items on the consent agenda? Start here in chambers. Invite you to the podium. Not seeing anybody rushing up. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room for the consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Any members of the public who wish to provide comment on any final action items, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And I see no hands in this time, Chair.
See no hands. We'll close public hearing and bring it back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the role on the consent agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of six ayes and zero nays, the consent agenda is adopted. We're at section six, messages from the executive, judges, or prosecuting attorney. There's one message from the executive, and he is here in person to save him from reading the ordinance he signed into law. He did transmit the following ordinance that he approved and signed on April 29th, 2024. It was ordinance 2024-518, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council ratifying the collective bargaining agreement reached with the Pierce County Prosecuting Attorneys Association. Mr. Executive, you are here in person. Are you here for proclamation, or would you like to give remarks now?
No, I'd like to speak under item seven, one.
Sounds great. Thank you very much. So we are at section seven, Proclamations, Recognitions, and Awards. Today, the council is really thrilled to recognize the amazing career and leadership of the Bethel School District Superintendent Tom Segal for his many, many years of service to the students and faculty and staff of the Bethel School District. I would like to invite Mr. Segal to the podium as Councilmember Hitchens reads this recognition into the record. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to also ask that Councilmember Cooper's mic be turned off. She'll be leading the second half. We're tag teaming.
You got it.
Thank you. A recognition of the Pierce County Council and executive honoring Bethel School District Superintendent Thomas G. Segal for his years of faithful service to the students and faculty of Bethel School District. Whereas, Thomas G. Segal became the Bethel School District Superintendent in 2001, faithfully serving the students, families, faculty, and communities of the Bethel School District for 23 years. And whereas, during his tenure, Mr. Segal oversaw the implementation of three construction bonds that resulted in 16 new, rebuilt, or renovated schools, with four more currently under construction to meet the needs of the rapidly growing population. And whereas, Mr. Segal's passion and legislative engagement helped jumpstart the creation of the Pierce County Skill Center, which opened the doors on September 8th, 2010, bringing along with it a career option for students that lead to real jobs that mesh with workplace demands. The Pierce County Skill Center is committed to providing rigorous technical and professional experiences that prepare students for high-demand, high-wage jobs, along with post-secondary education through 17 programs ranging from automotive technology and the culinary arts to pre-veterinarian technology and medical careers. And whereas, the Pierce County Skill Center expands beyond the boundaries of the Bethel School District, serving juniors and seniors from counties 10 school districts, Bethel, Eatonville, Fife, Franklin Pierce, Ording, Stillicum, Sumner, Tacoma, University Place, and White River. And whereas, under Mr. Segal's leadership, the Bethel School District was one of 15 school districts in Washington State to use propane-fueled buses and provide every student with an iPad to aid in their learning journey, and the Bethel School District was and continues to be one of only a handful of school districts in the nation to provide shelter to homeless youth. And whereas, during Mr. Segal's tenure as superintendent, the Bethel School District also opened two school-based community health clinics, with another two in the works to provide students and families equitable access to high-quality healthcare services without having to travel out of their communities to receive care. And whereas, Mr. Segal also spearheaded the creation of a community connection department to support at-risk families of students, and since its inception, has served thousands of Bethel families. And whereas, Mr. Segal has been a fierce advocate for funding equity for low-income districts and a tireless advocate, legislative advocate, to improve infrastructure and resources in the Bethel community, resulting in increased funding for sidewalks so students have safer routes to and from school. And whereas, the Mid-County Leadership Team was convened by Mr. Segal to give a voice to the Parkland-Spanaway area, increasing the community's ability to inform and influence legislation that impacted the community. And whereas, Mr. Segal will retire on Sunday, June 30, 2024, leaving behind a legacy of service that has resulted in tangible gains, not only for the Bethel School District and Parkland-Spanaway communities, but for the whole of Pierce County, our state, and our nation. Now, therefore, be recognized on this 30th day of April, 2024, that the Pierce County Council and Executive honor Thomas G. Segal for his many years of faithful service as the superintendent of the Bethel School District.
Let's give a round of applause. We would love to hear from you, Mr. Segal.
Thank you very much, members of the council and county executive. It's kind of like being in front of the principal, but the words are very kind, and I certainly appreciate your reflection on my 23 years here, trying to make a difference for the kids and families in the area, and been able to assemble a great team of people, and I'm sure they'll be able to continue that work. And again, thank you very much for this honor. I sincerely appreciate it. I do need to note that my bride of 10 days, Diana, is over here, so she had the opportunity to come and share this recognition. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being with us. Well, Mr. Segal, we're going to be inviting you up here soon to take a photo with us, but I'm going to ask for remarks from the executive and council, and let's start with Executive Danmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the council, for the record, Bruce Danmeyer, I have the privilege of serving the people of Pierce County as their executive. It is amazing to think that I started my public service on the Puyallup School Board at almost the exact same time that Tom was taking the leadership reins on the Bethel School District. Has nothing to do with the fact that we're both Navy guys, but that is a good thing, much better than Army, right? Councilmember Herrera, just being clear about that. A couple of things that are particularly unique about Tom and his leadership of the Bethel School District and beyond, right? First of all, he was a non-traditional superintendent, right? He didn't come from the education world. He came from the Navy world, so he was an education leader with probably a little more focus on leader than education, but he grew that education piece. The things that I remember, so when I was on the Puyallup School Board, I was part of two superintendent searches, and I'm sure that Superintendent Goodpastor and Tom know that the average lifespan, not lifespan, the time they serve as a superintendent is like three and a half years. It is short. It is extremely short. It's a tough, brutal job that chews people up and spits them out. And I can remember when we were choosing a superintendent, I can remember distinctly saying, "I would rather have a good leader for 10 years than the best leader for three years," right? Because to have impact on your community, to benefit the children of your community, you've got to apply that leadership over time. Turnover, even with the best leaders, is just churn. You don't have impact. And the Bethel School District was fortunate to have a great leader for 23 years, and it shows. The power of leadership over time shows. So many things highlighted. Thank you for reading the proclamation. There's so many things in what he did for the students of the Bethel School District. Some other things that stand out to me are, I can remember hearing Tom many times lamenting, complaining, advocating for getting a higher education access to the students in Bethel. And when the state didn't deliver, he went out and found partners to bring college and the high school out so the Bethel students could access college classes while they're going to the high school. A great win-win, but that wasn't enough. Community members also got to access college through that program. Incredible, kind of strong leadership and vision and finding a way, which really characterizes kind of what Tom is. The other thing that stands out to me is I can remember meeting Bob, the Bethel Outreach Bus, and that was, again, an innovative way when he felt like their community needed something. Their students needed something, and their community needed something, so they created a way to go out and meet that need. And Tom's leadership obviously focused on the students in Bethel and the parents in that community, but went beyond that. You know, we talked about the Mid-County leadership, but there's also the Fredericksen business leadership. He has been part of bringing people together, always with, I've always noticed that when these groups come together, Bethel gets a good chunk of the agenda, Franklin Pierce gets a good chunk of the agenda, and the rest of us get a piece of the agenda. But it's all appropriate. He brings people together around issues, and he can effectively harangue people on issues. I don't know how many times when I was down in the state legislature, kind of every session, Tom showed up looking for funding that next building, that next program at the Pierce County Skill Center. And I hope you are proud of that accomplishment among men. So Pierce County is indeed fortunate to have had the leadership of somebody like Tom Segal for 23 years. He left an indelible mark on the students in the Bethel community, but on our whole community beyond that. So I am honored to stand before you in strong support of the proclamation honoring Tom. He has earned every bit of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Detective Danmeyer. We are joined by one of Mr. Segal's peers, the Superintendent of the Franklin Pierce School District, who also is chair of the Pierce County Superintendents Association. Superintendent Goodpastor.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Mello and all council members. Appreciate the opportunity here. I'm Lance Goodpastor, Superintendent of the Franklin Pierce School District, but yes, here on behalf and representing all Pierce County superintendents in supporting this recognition for Tom Segal. The proclamation states that Tom is being recognized for his years of faithful service to the students and faculty of the Bethel School District, but I would add, as the proclamation stated, that his years of faithful service and fierce advocacy on behalf of students have benefited students and staff and communities throughout Pierce County. His relentless, I use that word again intentionally, pursuit of equitable living conditions for all students have led to improvements in public education funding, safer communities, greater skills and trade centers, educational offerings, greater access to healthcare for our students, and upsurge in services to families experiencing homelessness, and improved communications and relations between public education and government entities. Read lots of emails, right? Moreover, speaking on behalf of the 14 superintendents, less experienced superintendents in the county, he's been a model of ethical and servant leadership for us, and frankly, a mentor to me personally, and I guarantee that every one of the 14 of us would stand up here and say the same thing. He's meant a great deal to us personally, professionally, and I'm proud to call him both a colleague and a friend. So congratulations, Tom, on this well-deserved proclamation.
Thank you, Superintendent Goodpastor. Thank you for making time to be here to help us recognize Mr. Segal and represent the rest of your peers. Are there other remarks by councilmembers? We'll begin with Councilmember Morell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In looking over the proclamation, I refused to read part of it because it didn't have the words that I wanted in it to speak about Tom. And that would be stubborn, dogged, mulish, devout, tireless advocate for students, and just an all-around great guy to have a cup of coffee with. My work with Tom started back in the state legislature when I was down there, and Tom was just hired, Superintendent Segal, excuse me, was just hired by the Bethel School District. And I said, "Oh, my God, you know, this is a group that can't pass a bond issue for nothing." And he had such high hopes going in there, but the reality of what it took to get the confidence of the Bethel school constituents to be able to understand that there was new leadership in town and things were going to be different. And so my years with Tom have been a great learning experience for me. As someone who has been involved in the community for a long time, you picked up the pieces and ran with them, and I just have appreciated. 23 years, really? Wow. You're only 55, Tom. But, you know, I'm just going to miss the fact that my mailbox won't be filled with your emails, and I think there, again, there's definitely some big shoes to fill in your replacement. But like I say, I wish you the best. You've earned your retirement many times over, and you're leaving a legacy behind in the Bethel School District and in the state of Washington because of your innovative ability to connect with people. And for that, I'm eternally grateful, and I wish you too the best. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Morell. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. I have a unique perspective on this because I had the pleasure of working under Tom Segal's leadership as an educator and as a member of the bargaining team. So we had a very interesting relationship when I kind of shifted and came to this role. But 23 years is quite an accomplishment. You led a variety of different school board makeups. You opened brand-new schools. I did not know as an educator that you were notorious for sending emails to electeds, and as an elected, it really was very well-thought-out, well-intentioned, and a lot. But at the same time, it got results. We have investments in the Pierce County Skill Center, which keeps growing. We have investments in health clinics now. We have investments in sidewalks. So whoever, I don't know, Mr. Goodpastor, are you going to take, or Dr. Goodpastor, sorry, are you going to take on that? I think we should divvy that up to the superintendents group. We're going to buy, okay. There we go. The other thing is I want to talk about the importance of one of the things that really was at the heart of his work, which is the Skill Center. I taught high school, and I taught high school to freshmen. And anybody who knows or works with ninth graders, you know, from one day to another, you can be talking to an entirely different human being. But I spoke with and had the time to work with freshmen that truly had no idea what their path was going to be, and to be able to tell them that here's an opportunity right here in Bethel that can allow you to go learn how to be an auto mechanic, to a chef, to a physical therapist, to a veterinarian tech. I would have the conversations in the science classroom where it was safe and they had a relationship with me, and I was able to connect them with, in the school districts, the opportunity to get fully engaged in their own education with a living wage job on the end of it upon completion. And while I know high school should do that, kids get lost, they would leave the Skill Center with those skills. And I would hope that every kid leaves regular high school, just the general high school, with those skills, but they have a broad choice to make. You leave the Skill Center with the skill to be a vet tech. You leave the Skill Center with the skills to be working in the culinary field, and that helps figure out a pathway for you, which is often what they need. And so that opportunity literally saved lives for kids that really weren't sure which way they were going to go. That truly is a jewel in our county, and so I just want to acknowledge that as you've added programs, you've opened more doors, and it really is going to impact lives in our county for generations to come. So thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Chair. I was kind of like, what else is there to say here? But I kind of look at a different perspective, and I don't do goodbyes. It's always, "We'll see you later," because the goodbyes are just kind of too finite. But my memories stand mostly starting at the legislature as the assistant. I'm like, "Oh, here comes Tom Segal." And you were just always relentless in getting the things that were needed for the projects you wanted done. And one of the things that I take from all of that is the big heart that you have and how that reverberates in the people that you know, that know you, that have spoken with me, and it is very meaningful. And one of the projects that I know that you've taken on, a personal interest, was in working with homeless and getting them into housing. And so that goes, it's connected to the school, but it also goes beyond that, and how meaningful that was in the personal relationships that you've developed through the years that put you in those positions to help others, and that's kind of unforgettable. So that big heart is going to be missed, but I know someone here doesn't care because she just loves you so much and can't wait to spend the rest of her life with you. And I'm sure that that is reciprocal, although I didn't have that conversation with you or hear you say that, but it's just very enlightening to have set such an example for the people in this community and the memories that will live forever on that. So thank you for your dedication and the work that you put forth. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I'll be brief with just sincere thanks for all the work that you've done. I remember when I first got elected to this office, Tom calls me up, says, "We need to meet," and shows me how I have these like 10 square blocks that are part of the Bethel District, in my district. And he's like, "So you got to fully be there for Bethel." I said, "I got 10 blocks." He's like, "Yeah, it doesn't matter. You got some, you got all." And I've really enjoyed getting out there, seeing the Bethel Outreach Bus to Bob and all the great things you've done out there. It's just been an honor to see you do, to see the work that you've done, support you through that, and I hope you continue to do great things. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Campbell. Well, Superintendent Segal, in closing, before we invite you up here to take a photo so we can commemorate the moment of your incredibly significant career in the Bethel School District, I too want to add my gratitude and recognition for an amazing, amazing career. In this role, I certainly got to see you in action. Everything my colleagues said is exactly right. You are tenacious, clear-eyed about what your students and families need to be successful, and you never, ever, ever give up. You are fierce and forceful, always, always direct and respectful and on point. And, you know, when I've seen you in action over the past several years, what you're caring about when you're at least advocating to this body is that we need to do our jobs to make sure that we're creating environments for kids so that they can show up ready to learn, right? And it's a lot like how our very progressive health department in this county takes their role into action, that we have to create an environment where people can live healthy lives. You take a very similar way about your work, that it is our job to make sure that kids can get to school safely and that they have libraries in their neighborhood and parks and recreation and a road network that works for the economy and the neighborhood, and after-school programs, so there are safe places for kids, right? It's our job to be in partnership with the school district to make sure that your kids can have successful lives and show up ready to learn, that your teachers can focus on teaching if kids can show up ready to learn. You take that same, that same tenacious attitude that our health department does to making sure that we're creating environments where people can live healthy lives. I just see it I just see it very similar. And yes, you send the emails, and very good emails, and you make the visits, and you do all the work to advocate, and you live it, right? So I remember last fall, very cold morning, you and your team are leading a walking school bus so that you wanted us to see very firsthand what it's like, how dangerous it is for so many of your kids to walk to school in a dark, fall, northwest morning. Nothing better than seeing it yourself, right? Again, you've done that in so many different places and made transformation happening, whether it's the school center or Safe Roots to School, building new first-class learning environments. You've had an exceptional career. I hope you spend a long time celebrating it and knowing how many thousands of lives you've truly transformed and made better. So congratulations to you. Thank you for giving us an opportunity to recognize your exemplary career. We'd love to invite you up and Executive Dan Meyer and Dr. Goodpastor up to grab a photo with us. A very special recognition there. Thank you. Well, next, the council's really pleased to proclaim May, the month of May, 2024, for Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Pierce County, Washington. And we'd like to invite the following recipients to the podium. Thank you for making your way. Louina Pritchard, Executive Director of the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center. Sinan Hem, a representative from our Cambodian community. Sky Rozon, representative from the Filipino community. Chris Trinh, who's a representative from our Vietnamese community. And Derrit Pak, representing our Cambodian community. Auntie Lua, did I miss anybody in the introduction?
And we have Samantha here from the Laos community.
Thank you so much, Samantha. Thank you for being here. Thank you for all of you being here, as I have the great honor of reading this proclamation into the record. So this is a proclamation of the Pierce County Council proclaiming May 2024 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month here in Pierce County, Washington. And with that, we're going to take a five-minute recess to make sure technology is working. We'll be in recess for five minutes. Well, we'll come back. Thank you for making sure that our technology was working and everyone at home could be able to participate. Let's invite back up our many guests representing the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander community here in Pierce County. Thank you so much for joining us. We are going to be reading a proclamation proclaiming May 2024 as Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month here in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas in 1978, President Jimmy Carter proclaimed May 1st through the 10th Asian American Heritage Week to underline the appreciation for the contributions Asian Americans have made to the United States and to recognize the immigration and naturalization laws that discriminated against them, especially in regard to education, housing, and employment. And whereas in 1992, Congress passed a law that annually designates May as Asian Pacific American Heritage Month, with May being selected as the month in commemoration of the immigration of the first Japanese people here, May 7, 1843, and the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad in May 10, 1869. And whereas the Federal Asian Pacific American Council, which is the premier organization representing Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander employees in the federal government and District of Columbia, established the 2024 National AANHPI, which stands for Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander Heritage Month theme as "Advancing Leaders Through Innovation." And whereas advancing leaders through innovation pays homage to the visionaries and trailblazers who have shaped our AANHPI history and community and continue to influence our collective future, innovation, resilience, and pioneering spirit. Our cornerstones of American leadership and AANHPI leaders have made lasting contributions to our nation's economic prosperity, technological advancements, and social-political change through their ingenuity and creativity while navigating significant cultural and systematic barriers. And whereas the history of those systemic barriers is remembered in Pierce County today through things like the Chinese Reconciliation Park, established in the early 1990s, which memorializes the Tacoma riot, where Tacoma's Chinese residents were forcefully removed and displaced by a mob who burned their homes and their businesses and marched them to the railroad crossing on Tacoma's waterfront, where they were forced to purchase their own ticket to Portland, Oregon. And whereas the Western Washington Fairgrounds in Puyallup was once known as Camp Harmony during World War II, where it was used as a transfer station to internment camps, an era in American history where 120,000 Japanese-Americans were stripped of their constitutionality, protected freedoms and liberties for no other reason than the fact that they were of Japanese descent. Following World War II, only 174 Japanese residents returned to Tacoma at the time. And whereas AANHPI people have been and continue to be innovative leaders, trailblazers, and agents of progress in the United States despite this history, reaching the height of achievement in industries like science, medicine, technology, innovative farmers and ranchers, lawyers, judges, civic and government leaders, and much, much more. And whereas today, more than 700,000 Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islanders live in the state of Washington, representing 48 Asian and Pacific Island nations, and through their actions make our state a much more vibrant, prosperous, and secure community. And whereas the Pierce County is home to the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center that serves as an ambassador for all Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander communities in Pierce County and across the state, sharing cultures, providing resources, and promoting inclusivity. So now therefore be it proclaimed on this 30th day of April 2024 by the Pierce County Council that May 2024 is Asian American, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Pierce County, Washington. And the Pierce County Council encourages residents to partake in community education and celebration events across Pierce County. Let's give them a round of applause. Auntie Lua.
Well, here, here, Council Chair Ryan Mello. And we are so proud also to recognize you today as sitting on the Pierce County Council as one of us from Hawaii. Thank you so much, Pierce County Council, all of you respected members of our council. We're so proud of all of you. We work with each and every one of you. You have touched our lives in so many ways individually as leaders of this county in government. Thank you so much for all you've done for our people. There are actually over 70,000 of us in Pierce County, living here proudly. And we are so happy, and we're growing every single day. We're multiplying by births, and we're multiplying by people coming in to visit us and decide to stay here in Pierce County. Thank you so much, and thank you for all of your support for Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, because it will be a hub. It will be a hub that you have played a role in, to making it happen for our people to come together, be together, and break bread together. Thank you so much for this honor. Thank you, and happy month of May. Yes.
Any other remarks by anyone else? They're here to have your back?
I do that.
Thank you for representing our diverse cultures and the AANHPI community. Thank you for being here. Let me open it up to council for final remarks before we invite you all up here for a photo. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the resiliency. You talked, you have 70,000 or so in the state, you said?
And county.
In the county, in the county. That's a lot. And in the proclamation, you talked about despite the history. And that's a couple of things I want to talk about is despite the history. I want to talk about two individuals that were very impactful in my life. And one of them was somebody who had a family history who served in the United States military from World War I, the Korean War, and then Vietnam. And their family members, each one of them were wounded in combat. Despite the history, they served. And this person was telling me about the history of his family. And this person was someone I served with. And he was my machine gunner in Iraq. And his name was Frank, or Fred Morisako, Specialist Morisako. And Specialist Morisako is one of the best soldiers I ever served with in my life. He ended up getting wounded in combat. He loved Hawaii. He's a Native Hawaiian. He mixed, you know, there's a lot of people in Hawaii that are mixed. And despite the history, he told me the history of his family continued to serve the United States, then in the military, honorably. The second person I wanted to talk about is a person that was one of my mentors as in law enforcement. That was Lieutenant Ben Baker. He is now retired now. I don't think, isn't anybody who doesn't know who that man is. He's been really involved with the Hawaiian Civic Club and many other things. The man has an angelic voice. 30-plus years in law enforcement. And the man, I mean, it could be total chaos in a room. He'd walk into a room and everybody would be calm. He'd calm a room down like you wouldn't believe. Fair but firm man. And these are two people that were very inspirational to me, and despite the history. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you for those reflections, Councilmember Herrera. Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you all for being here. But Auntie Lua, I just want to acknowledge and thank the work of the AAPC. The theme of this year, which is advancing leaders through innovation, I immediately thought of the work that you do to acknowledge and educate the future leaders within the Asian American, Pacific Islander, Hawaiian communities. You make sure that you are bringing generations together to keep language, culture, art, dance, music, and just history alive in innovative ways. You change what you're doing to meet what's happening in our community. And you do that through the voice of the people that you're serving and highlighting and lifting up. And then you invite us to come and experience and enjoy and celebrate with you. So when I think of advancing leaders through innovation, you're doing that every day. So it's like, it's like they knew when they came up with the theme about the Asian Pacific Cultural Center. So thank you for all the leaders within the community that are doing that in all the different populations across the county. I had the opportunity to attend two different Cambodian celebrations, one by your organization and one at one of the temples, which was the first time I'd been at a temple. And so warm, so inviting, every time I go to anywhere that you are there to enjoy, educate, and celebrate. And then there's always food. So thank you so much for all you do in our community. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Fisher Campbell.
Thank you, Chair. I'll try to be brief. But I just sincerely thank you to each one of you for your contributions to fabric of our community here in Pierce County. I know my time, previous council and here, I've worked a lot to engage populations, including the Asian Pacific Islander community and Native Hawaiian community. And just nothing but joy every time I'm there. And just the spirit at which you approach everything and bring it into our communities and add so much vibrancy. But just individually, thank you so much for your contributions day in and day out.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Hoover.
Thank you, Chair. I just want to say how comfortable it is always to be around you. Very engaging, warm, friendly, all of those words that make it a joy to be around you. And I just wanted to relay that message because it's not always easy because sometimes you feel uptight. But it's always great food, great smiles, great company. And I always appreciate the things that you do. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Well, in closing, thank you for making time in your very busy lives to allow us to lift up this proclamation and the Asian American, Native Hawaiian, Pacific Islander community. It's very special to me, growing up in Hawaii, surrounded by these very vibrant communities. And as my colleagues said, you know, we like to really lift up the diversity that makes us stronger in Pierce County. We so appreciate the partnership with the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center and all of these communities. And, you know, we were pleased to invest in the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center capital campaign. We're going to have a new home for the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center real soon. We were pleased to help fund the next phase of the Chinese Reconciliation Park on Tacoma's waterfront, our remembrance for that very horrific time in our history. Also, we are proud to be funders of the Japanese Memorial at the Washington State Fairgrounds. Again, remembering that very important history. But you're also a partner in the human capital. Not, those are physical assets of places to celebrate and faces to remember. But you're also a very special place that we've invested in with our Business Incubator program and our navigation program to invest in new entrepreneurs. You've helped us navigate the pandemic and helped us do all kinds of mental health programs and youth violence prevention programs. You're a partner in all the ways. And so thank you for making sure that we can, in a very culturally competent way, meet people where they're at and serve them very culturally competently. So we're very grateful.
And on behalf of all of our people here in Pierce County and the state of Washington, thank you for all you do for all of us.
Thank you. We would love to invite you up here to get a photo with us. Okay, our last proclamation this afternoon. Counsel is very pleased to proclaim May 2024 as Community Action Awareness Month in Pierce County. And I'd like to invite the following recipients to the podium. Carol Menza from the community, I don't see, Carol. Do we have Kristin Kenyon? Kristin Kenyon from Social Services Supervisor in our Human Services Department. Linda Buchanan, also a Social Services Program Specialist with our Human Services Department. As Vice Chair Campbell reads this proclamation into the record.
Thank you, Chair. A proclamation that Pierce County Council proclaims May 2024 as Community Action Awareness Month in Pierce County, Washington. Whereas since its inception in 1971, the Pierce County Community Action Program has been a pillar of support collaborating with local community organizations and members to assist our neighbors facing poverty. And whereas Pierce County Community Action is dedicated to cultivating positive change and enriching lives to create thriving communities. And whereas May is recognized as Community Action Awareness Month, a time to celebrate the impact of community action initiatives in addressing the needs of vulnerable populations. Whereas the Pierce County Council, Pierce County Community Action serves over 6,800 families annually through vital programs, including child reach, energy assistance, early childhood education and assistance program, weatherization, and minor home repair, ensuring access to essential resources for those in need. Whereas Pierce County Community Action is dedicated to positively transforming lives and fostering hope, dignity, and resilience within our community. And whereas Pierce County Community Action will continue to implement innovative programs to address the diverse needs of our residents and to exemplify the spirit of helping others. And whereas Pierce County Council encourages all residents to join in commemorating Community Action Awareness Month by recognizing and supporting the critical work of the Pierce County Community, Community Action and similar agencies across the nation. Now therefore, be it proclaimed on this, the 30th day of April 2024, by the Pierce County Council, that May 2024 is hereby designated as Community Action Awareness Month in Pierce County, Washington.
Let's give them a round of applause.
Thank you for being here so we can lift up these really great initiatives that our Human Services Department helps run. Please, some, some remarks from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council. We are seven years younger than the national. There's, the national level is celebrating 60 years, and in seven years, we will be back telling you we're 60 years old. Those of us that work or volunteer in community action are part of a long and valuable legacy. We have inspired the still of, the spirit of hope and help millions of individuals and families connect with approaches to help them succeed, making communities and our nation stronger. We are one of about 1,000 agencies nationwide, and today, we thrive in every corner of America. We connect 9.5 million people, including 3.1 million children under the age of 17, and 2.1 million adults over the age of 55, with services and supports that improve their lives. We co-design services and strategies with people who have lived poverty experiences, and we coordinate innovative solutions to achieve a greater impact and share expertise with national, state, and local agencies. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you to both of you. Thank you for the work you do day in and day out. Are there remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you both for the work that you do in the community. For those that want to learn a little bit more about one of the gems of this, our ECAP program, Health and Human Services, we'll be covering this next Tuesday, so plug for a council, a committee meeting. But really appreciate that the, the work we do, and when we talk about trying to get upstream, we're talking about how we can support community members. One of the programs, one of the many things that you do is this kind of marriage of a variety of programs that try to get upstream for families and prevent them from having youth that follow a path that leads them out of the education system by starting as, as early as their toddler years to get them the supports to get engaged in education. You're working with homeowners that, or home renters that are trying to make ends meet and get them the energy assistance. And so you kind of fill the little gaps, but they can be the make or break of family, and so incredibly important. So thank you for that work. I'm glad we're taking some time to celebrate the, the work that, that you all do on the ground, or on the phone, or on a Zoom, or in the classroom, all the ways that you're doing that work across the county. But thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Well, thank you, Vice Chair Campbell, for reading it to the record. Councilmember Herrera.
Thank you, Chair. Just wanted to talk a little bit about one of the programs, and that's the weatherization and minor home repair. A lot of that is for some folks who are on fixed incomes, and a lot of those are folks who are elderly and have older homes that may not be energy efficient with, you know, there's a lot of crisis sometimes with fixed incomes when, you know, it's really cold outside, or it's really hot, and you use an excess of energy which costs more money. A weatherization program is really great. I had one of our constituents, it was something that really helped them here in Pierce County. And they had health issues, you know, single-pane windows. I mean, we still have some of these older homes out here, and, you know, they worked hard all their lives, and they were just, could not do it. And they went through the program and were helped, and they were really appreciative, and I just wanted to highlight that, that these programs just help people along just when they just, right when they need it. So, thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Councilmember Herrera. Exactly why we wanted to make time in our agenda, despite your best efforts and limited budget to get the word out about these really amazing programs to help keep people in their home, to do preschool and early childhood education, these are really gems of programs that are lifelines for many families. You know, Vice Chair Campbell wanted to make sure, and the council did, that we paused and lifted up these programs, because we wish we had more resources to shout from the rooftops about how special these programs are and for more people to be aware of them who need to take advantage of them. Everything from weatherization to minor home repair, things like ramps so that folks who are, have a mobility impairment can stay in their home and, and live in their home longer. Diaper banks that you help, help run for families. Diapers are really expensive and galvanizing the community to help run diaper banks so that families can still provide for their kiddos. There, there's so many things that our Community Action Agency does through the Human Services Department to stabilize families, keep people independent, keep people in their home, and we, we wanted to really make sure we lifted it, lifted it up so, so more families could be aware of these really critical programs. Thank you for doing the hard work on behalf of the people of Pierce County.
Thank you.
We would love to invite you up to have a photo.
So I'm going to take one. If you can hang tight, you'll get another one. One, two, three. And one more. All right, and one, two, three. Awesome. Thank you.
Before we continue with the rest of our agenda, I want to recognize that Councilmember Denson has been with us virtually for some time. We know she was able to log into the meeting during our recognition of Superintendent Siegels. So thank you, Councilmember Denson. Councilmember Denson, do you mind if we make sure your volume is working?
Testing, testing.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Councilmember Denson, since your volume is working, we pulled Resolution 2024-157 from the consent agenda. Councilmember Denson, are you in a position to move Resolution 2024-157?
Yes, I will move Resolution 2024-157.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2024-157. Madam Clerk, please read the title.
Proposal number 2024-157, a resolution of the Pierce County Council for confirming the reappointment of one existing member, Michael Stewart, to the Pierce County Ethics Commission.
Thank you. This is an appointment being brought to us by the Pierce County Executive of Michael Stewart to the Pierce County Ethics Commission. Mr. Stewart, thank you for being patient through the previous items on our agenda. We would love for you to briefly introduce yourself and share why you want to serve. As, as a reminder, we do have the benefit of your, your written materials in our packet. So please introduce yourself.
Good. Thank you. Good afternoon. It was a pleasure watching the county work and obviously congratulate a lot of wonderful people who've done so much for the county. I've been on the Ethics Commission. I continue to serve. I'd like to continue to serve. I love this community. I'm a proud member of Pierce County. I live here in Tacoma, and we have so much to be proud of. I was also told that no one actually wants to hear from the Ethics Commission, and to keep my remarks short.
We're always happy to hear from you, Mr. Stewart. Thank you for being with us. Thank you for your interest in continuing your public service.
Thank you.
Are there questions or comments by members before we open this up for a public hearing? I don't see any. This is a public hearing on the reappointment of Michael Stewart to the Pierce County Ethics Commission. Anyone in chambers wish to provide comment? Anyone in council chambers? Not seeing anybody. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in the Zoom room?
Yes, sir. Freedom members of the public who wish to provide comment on proposal number R2024-157, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And it looks like we have one hand this time, Chair. Wait.
That's Councilmember Denson. We'll come back to her.
We have no other hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Denson.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just want to give a quick thank to Mr. Stewart for serving on the Ethics Commission and for agreeing to be reappointed. I've heard wonderful things about Mr. Stewart, and many of you are, are probably very familiar with some of the organizations that he's involved with in his, in giving of his personal time. Green Trikes is one that stood out to me. He's also started and managed a number of businesses, and I, I can absolutely appreciate the importance of, of the Ethics Commission, and it's just imperative that we operate in a way that is transparent and thoughtful, and, and we really appreciate the, the guidance and close eye of residents like Mr. Stewart. So thank you so much for agreeing to serve again.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Denson. Any other remarks? I don't see any. Thank you again, Mr. Stewart, for your willingness to continue your important public service. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll in Resolution 2024-157?
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Hoover.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchens.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mallow.
Aye.
The result of the vote, a total of seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Thank you again, Mr. Stewart, for your patience.
Thank you.
We're back to section eight ordinance says, we have proposal O2024-517 before us. Councilmember Hitchens, for a motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move O2024-517.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2024-517. Madam Clerk, please read the title.
Proposal number O2024-517, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council amending Chapter 10.38 of the Pierce County Code ferry fares by adopting a new ferry fare schedule and setting an effective date. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor to brief the council.
Yes, good afternoon. The proposal before you begins at page 85 of your electronic packet. As the clerk indicated when she read the title into the record, this proposal relates to the county's ferry fare schedule. Proposal before you specifically corrects minor errors in the schedule. As a reminder, the county provides vehicular and passenger ferry service to Anderson and Ketrone Islands. The service is supported in part through the collection of ferry fares. The fares are codified as Chapter 10.38 of the County Code. They were last adjusted in fall of 2023 through ordinance number 202358-S, which became effective on January 1st of this year. When 58-S was adopted, it contained minor errors that affected a small number of ferry fare classes. Proposal before you corrects those errors. The classes specifically affected were larger vehicles, specifically vehicles that are 70 feet or longer in length. Also affected were the motorcycle value passes. Smaller vehicles such as passenger cars and trucks are not affected, nor are fares for walk-on passengers. In total, it's estimated the affected number of fares or tickets annually that is affected by this minor error is approximately 200. That's based upon the last fare collection information that's available. The staff report describes the specific changes, but you'll note that for the motorcycle value pass for 2024, there's actually a decrease. That's a decrease in the peak fare by approximately $2 per ticket. So that's actually good news to those purchasers of motorcycle value passes. Their fares will actually go down. And then for the year 2025, you'll see increases for larger vehicles, specifically, again, those vehicles in excess of 70 feet. And then for motorcycle value passes, a decrease in the peak rate for the year 2025 as well. That decrease is $2.25 per ticket. In total, this is expected to have de minimis impact fiscally. The slight increases are offset by the decreases in terms of the totality of the ferry fares. So there's really no fiscal impact. The proposal before you did receive a due pass recommendation from your Economic and Infrastructure Development Committee. That recommendation came to you from the April 23 meeting of that committee, and the proposal is before you today for final consideration. I do note that, well, I'm not actually seeing a department staff person available in the Zoom lobby. They may be in the guest room.
I don't see Jeff Campbell from Planning Public Works.
Okay, but I'm happy to answer any questions. This is a very straightforward proposal, fairly simple in nature, and I believe I can probably field any questions that you may have regarding this item.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Questions before we open up for a public hearing? I don't see any. Mr. Taylor, thank you for briefing the council. This is a public hearing on ordinance 2024-517. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment on this ordinance, please come to the podium. Not seeing anybody on this ordinance here in council chambers. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room?
Yes, sir. Freedom members of the public who wish to provide comment on proposal number O2024-517, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by councilmembers? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you, Mr. Taylor, and the department staff for getting this cleaned up and situated. We did share this with Island Community during a meeting earlier this year, and they were appreciative of the, the correction to, to go with the theme with the ferry fares on our value passes. They don't get a bump on the peak season. It stays the same, and so not sure what happened, but we've made that correction, so that was appreciated. And then anyone going, why do we have 70-foot or 80-foot vehicles on our ferries? RVs, boats, like a trailer with a car? I, I haven't seen a bus, but I'm sure if an RV can fit, a bus can fit. I haven't seen a bus, but I'm sure if an RV can fit, a bus can fit. Actually, I don't think I've seen a bus, but I know buses gone out, so, well, and school buses. So, yeah, they, they're, it is used by all kinds of vehicles. So, it's quite impressive. So, thank you all for getting this. And I'm gonna knock on some wood right now, because every time we talk about the ferry in a council meeting, something goes wrong. So, there we go. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Vice Chair Campbell?
I'll point out, we're just talking about the fares today. So, not about the ferry, so you'll be safe. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Ordinance 2024-517?
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. That brings us to ordinance 2024-521. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I move Ordinance Number 2024-521.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2024-521. Madam Clerk, please read the title.
Proposal Number O2024-521, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council where to find the collective bargaining agreement reached with the Teamsters Chauffeurs Warehousemen and Helpers Union, Local Number 313, Teamsters 313, effective January 1, 2024 to December 31, 2025, and admitting the Pierce County Salary Classification Plan.
Thank you. Ms. Chapman, to brief the council.
Yes, thank you, Chair. This ordinance ratifies a two-year collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters 313 Union. It affects 139 FTEs within the Planning and Public Works and Facilities Management Departments. The positions covered include within Planning and Public Works, Accounting Assistant 2 and 3, and Office Assistant 2 and 3, within the Maintenance and Maintenance Worker, Maintenance Technician in Training, Maintenance Technician, Traffic Sign Technician, and Traffic Sign Technician Lead. It also includes Gardener 1 in the Facilities Management Department. The agreement runs from January 1, 2024 through December 31, 2025. It calls for a wage increase of 4% on January 8, 2024, and 4% on January 6, 2025. The new agreement also includes the work assignment for the new litter vacuum truck. The fiscal impact is $465,500 in 2024 and 900, or sorry, $946,110 in 2025. This ordinance was reviewed at the April 15 Rules and Operations Committee and was given a due pass recommendation, and I do see that we have Matthew Wood available from the Human Resources Department to assist with questions.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Anything to add on behalf of the department?
No, nothing to add.
Thank you. As Ms. Chapman noted, this includes a worker, or the workforce to, to help drive the new litter truck, yet-to-be-named litter truck. We're eagerly anticipating that naming contest by the community. Are there questions or comments by council members before we open up for a public hearing? I don't see any. This is a public hearing on Ordinance 2024-521, a collective bargaining agreement with the Teamsters, Local 313. Anyone in chambers wishing to provide comment? I'm not seeing any. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on proposal number O2024-521, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And I see no hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? I don't see any. Mr. Wood, on behalf of the council, the, thank you for the hard work with the labor team and the great employees of Teamsters 313. This work group does important work to maintain our transportation infrastructure and plan for our community, so thank you. They do really hard work. Madam Clerk, please read the, please call the roll on Ordinance 2024-521.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. Our final ordinance is ordinance 2024-522-S. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion, please.
Thank you, Chair. I move Proposal Number O2024-52S.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt ordinance 2024-522-S. Madam Clerk, please read the title.
Proposal Number O2024-522-S, an ordinance of the Pierce County Council amending Chapter 1.28 of the Pierce County Code Rules of Procedure, Pierce County Council.
Thank you. Ms. Long, to brief the council.
Thank you, good afternoon. So, the Pierce County Charter at Section 235 provides that the council shall enact by ordinance rules of procedure governing the time, place, and conduct of its meetings and hearings, and the introduction, publication, consideration, and adoption of ordinances. The council's rules of procedure, as you know, are codified at Chapter 128 and have been amended from time to time since their adoption by the council. The proposer visions today, I would categorize into three groups. The first is some new in-district procedures. Then there are some changes to your meeting agenda, and finally, some, a couple that just clarify current practices. So, your new in-district meeting procedures do to a couple of things. So, you have two types of in-district meetings. The first would be those in-district meetings, and these are those pursuant to the charter that are held in place of a regular meeting. And then you have the other that are held in addition to your regular meeting. So, the district meeting is held in place of a regular Tuesday afternoon meeting. The requirements would now be that the resolution setting that, that the time, place, and date of that meeting shall be adopted at least 60 days prior to the meeting date, and the place for that meeting must accommodate PCTV and the council's remote public attendance application, so Zoom for, for now. For the in-district meetings held in addition to your regular Tuesday afternoon meetings is more of a guideline, and the language provides that council members are encouraged to select a meeting place that can accommodate PCTV and the council's remote public attendance application, or Zoom for now. The next category is changes to your council meeting agenda. So, the first is that the moment of silence has been added to your agenda. Council has done this for many years, but now it's actually on your agenda for, for people to recognize, and it is placed following the pledge and preceding the land acknowledgement like we, you did today. The next change is that the messages section is broadened to include other county elected officials. So, currently, it's messages from the executive prosecuting attorney and judges. It would be broadened to include all county elected officials. Next, we address presentations, and that has been added to Section 7 along with proclamation, proclamations, and recognitions. In the past, presentations are typically held under other business. So, whoever's here to make those presentations would have to sit through the whole meeting, wait till the end for that. Now, there's a place for that. And then finally, on your agenda change, the order of ordinances and resolutions is reversed, primarily to provide a smoother transition when confirmation resolutions are pulled off the consent agenda to speak with the applicant. Then the last category of changes is those that clarify current practices, and there are two. So, the first of those is simply clarifying that the purpose of community forum is to afford the public the opportunity to comment on issues of significance to or affecting Pierce County, and then do not appear on that day's agenda for final action. So, that, that part is not currently in your rules. That's what the practice has been, but now it's very clear, so people who, who wish to speak under that category know what, what topics they can address. And then the other change in this category is clarifying that the Rules and Operations Committee not only sets the council agendas and meeting schedules, but also approves, sets and approves proclamations and recognitions. So, this was discussed in your council retreat on February 29 of this year. It was heard in the Rules and Operations Committee on April 22 and was forwarded to the full council with a due pass as substituted recommendation, and it is before you today for final action. Thank you.
Thank you for briefing the council, Ms. Long. Are there questions before we open up for a public hearing? I don't see any. So, this is a public hearing on the update to the council's rules of procedure. Anybody here in council chambers wish to provide comment on this ordinance? I don't see anybody in chambers coming to the podium, so we'll move to our Zoom room. Mr. Winesbury?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on proposal number O2024-522-S, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And I see no hands at this time, Chair.
You know hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? Are there final, sorry, are there, I didn't see lights. Are there final remarks by council members? I don't see any. Ms. Long, thank you for drafting what we discussed in our, in our council retreat and helping us continue to fine tune our procedures. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll on Ordinance 2024-522-S?
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the ordinance is adopted. We're at Resolution Section 9. We have Resolution 2024-147 before us. Vice Chair Campbell for a motion, please.
Thank you. I would like to move Proposal Number R2024-147.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2024-147. Madam Clerk, please read the title.
Proposal Number R2024-147, a resolution of the Pierce County Council establishing meeting times for committee of the whole meetings in 2024.
Thank you. Mr. Taylor, to brief the council.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon again, you Taylor council staff. So, the proposal before you, as the title indicates, relates to meetings of the committee of the whole. This proposal starts at page 149 of your packet. As a reminder, the council is holding a series of meetings of the committee of the whole on a monthly basis throughout the year 2024. These meetings are focusing on budget-related matters, public policy topics, and other topics of interest to the council. The proposal before you establishes dates and times for meetings of the committee of the whole for the remainder of 2024. Establishing these regular dates and times increases the visibility of these meetings to the public, eliminates the need for special meeting notices, and is administratively efficient. The proposal before you was reviewed at the Rules and Operations Committee on April the 15th. It did receive a due pass recommendation. It is before the body today for final consideration. Do you happen to answer any questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Are there questions by council members? Not seeing any. This is a public hearing on Resolution 2024-147. We'll start here in chambers as we always do. Anyone here wishing to provide comment on this resolution? Not seeing anybody come to the podium. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on proposal number R2024-147, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Chair.
We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? I don't see any. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on Resolution 2024-147.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. Our final resolution is Resolution 2024-151. Councilmember Hitchen for a motion.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move R2024-151.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded that we adopt Resolution 2024-151. Madam Clerk, please read the title.
Proposal Number R2024-151, a resolution of the Pierce County Council authorizing the Pierce County Executive to apply to the community outdoor athletic facilities, youth athletic facilities of Washington Wildlife and Recreation Programs.
Last line, please.
Last line is Washington Administrative Code and other applicable authorities.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger, to brief.
Good afternoon, Chair Mello, and good afternoon, council members. The proposed resolution before you this afternoon would authorize the Pierce County Parks and Recreation Department to apply for a grant administered through the Washington State Recreation Conservation Office. County park projects that would be considered for funding through this grant opportunity are Pipeline Trail Phase 2, and that is the Fruitland to Nathan Chapman section, as well as the Springer Recreation Center artificial turf ball fields. The Washington State RCO requires agencies applying for grant funding to satisfy specific conditions related to project eligibility and funding in a specific format. The resolution would demonstrate county council support for the project described in the resolution. The text for the resolution is supplied by the RCO folks and must be used verbatim. The specific grant programs that would be utilized for these projects are Washington Wildlife and Recreation Program, Parks and Trails, and the Land and Water Conservation Fund, as well as youth, as well as youth athletic facilities and community outdoor athletic facilities. The council's adopted resolution must be included as part of the RCO grant application packet, which is due on May 1, which happens to be tomorrow. The county's adopted Parks, Recreation, and Open Space Plan demonstrates the need for additional parks, trails, and athletic facilities in Pierce County. Each of the parks and trails projects included in this resolution fulfill a need identified in the pros plan. The proposed resolution does not obligate the county to any capital expenditures, but allows the county to apply for this grant funding. The $6.7 million RCO grant request anticipates $8.7 million of county matching funds. The Pipeline Trail Phase 2 project anticipates $2.4 million match utilizing park impact fees and real estate excise tax. The Springer Recreation Artificial Turf Ball Fields anticipate $6.3 million in matching funds, with $3.3 million being park impact fees and $3 million being real estate excise tax. And the funding matches for the Springer Artificial Turf project. Those are not included in the adopted capital facilities plan. This proposal was considered by the Rules and Operations Committee on April 22, and the committee forwarded the recommend, this proposal to the full council with a due pass recommendation, and happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Krueger. We do have department staff here. Do you have anything to add on behalf of Parks and Recreation Department? Ms. Freeman?
I do not.
Well, thank you for being here to answer any potential questions. Do members have any questions before we open up for a public hearing? I'm not seeing any. This is a public hearing on Resolution 2024-151. Any member of the public wish to provide comment here in council chambers on this resolution? Not seeing any. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment on proposal number R2024-151, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And there are no hands at this time, Chair.
Seeing no hands, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council. Are there final remarks by council members? We discussed this at length over a number of Rules and Operations Committee meetings. Thank you, department staff, for answering our questions and pursuing good projects. I know we have lots of concerns about making sure we can fulfill our obligations, because we have a lot of need in this space to continue to improve the quality of life, and the department is working really hard to leverage local revenues with state and federal grants so that we can expand opportunities and make the most of our local dollars. So, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, please, Madam Clerk, please call the roll on Resolution 2024-151.
Councilmember Hitchen.
Aye.
Councilmember Morell.
Aye.
Councilmember Campbell.
Aye.
Councilmember Krueger.
Aye.
Councilmember Denson.
Aye.
Councilmember Herrera.
Aye.
And Councilmember Mello.
Aye.
The result of the roll call vote is seven ayes and zero nays.
On a vote of seven ayes and zero nays, the resolution is adopted. That does bring us to Section 10, Community Forum. Community Forum is an opportunity for members of the public to address the council on any topic that is of significance to or affecting Pierce County government and that did not appear on today's agenda. There is a three-minute time limit. We ask you to state your name if you would like it on the record and to address all comments to the chair. We'll start with those here in chambers who have signed in. Lee Thorin, followed by Celeste Hurst.
Yeah, my name, for the record, Lee Thorin, and I'm representing the SR 162 Community Group. And I know you've been getting a few materials from us, so I want to, I want to follow up with that, particularly the CEDC meeting yesterday in regards to the comp plan updates. We like to emphasize the need for council support for a proposed added amendment to that comp plan that would identify an extension of 128th East from Reservoir Road to SR 162 and make that preferred alternative for study by the Department of Planning and Public Works. We ask the council to consider the amendment and particularly the common sense and correlation to the comprehensive plans overriding goals of safety, equity, environmental and social impacts, efficiency, and added multimodal opportunity. I think they all come into play. And all this, particularly given the impact on those goals of the Toholy connection to 128th that's in the works, 128th and 162. We believe that the, the other east-west alternative, the current east-west alternative, the Military Road Corridor is fraught with driveways, access roads that already create difficult safety issues accessing and exiting into steep, curvy, limited visibility corridor. And those safety issues, of course, are greatly accentuated with the projected added westbound traffic coming from Toholy. In addition to safety, there would be clear environmental and social impacts to the multitude of residents along that corridor from, of course, from increasing climbing vehicles, given the noise exhaust, to say nothing of the increased social impact on quality of life and living environments for those residents. The other fact is that, that there's certainly no multimodal aspect to the Military Road Corridor. That corridor will not support a mixed-use lane that could result in bicycle pedestrians using that. The Military Road Corridor does not provide the necessary equity or efficiency of service to the greater Pierce County. It will, will not provide a connection to Parkland or Bonny Lake Plateau, which we think the long-range planning needs to consider. Conversely, the proposed 128th Street extension that we're talking about is a straight-line cross corridor which has few homes and access points that would create, would not create access safety concerns. Construction in an undeveloped area would minimize, if not eliminate, many of the environmental and social impacts on Pierce County residents.
Thank you. If you could just summarize.
Well, I'll just summarize again by saying it would, it would seem that, given the elements and direction that are, the clear intent of the comprehensive plan, that this needs to happen. We would ask for your support for this.
Thank you for being with us, Lee. Maxine Herbert Hill, I'm sorry, I, okay, didn't mean to pass over you. Didn't indicate your willingness to speak. Celeste Hurst, followed by Cynthia Frederick. We do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Celeste Hurst. My address is 11603 136th Avenue East, Puyallup. I'm here as a Sunrise Terrace homeowner and representative of the Sunrise Terrace community, which was established in the early 1960s. My husband and I have lived and raised our family here for nearly 25 years. Over this time, we witnessed massive housing development and the accompanying traffic growth on South Hill with no additional roads to support the development and the growth. And now we see the expansion of homes from the Bonny Lake Toholy development and the five-lane highway coming from this development, threatening our neighborhood with even more traffic trying to access South Hill by traveling up Military Road and 122nd Street East. As you can see from the handout map, Military Road runs directly through the middle of Sunrise Terrace. And we believe that any lane additions to Military Road will further bisect and divide our close-knit community. The handout map shows the impact of widening Military Road on residents compared to 128th Street on the reverse side. Currently, it has become more dangerous to enter and exit our neighborhood due to increased travel on Military Road. Many in the community are concerned about losing their homes to road expansion. We believe there is a much better alternative for traffic flow by extending 128th Street East where it intersects at SR 162 and extend it to the other side of the valley going west up the hillside to Reservoir Road East, 128th Street East, creating an east-west corridor. This would be a more equitable solution to the anticipated number of vehicles traveling down the new Toholy Highway who are trying to get to South Hill. A well-planned, nicely engineered additional road out of the valley for traffic, emergencies, Laha evacuation, bike lanes, and public transportation would be an amazing asset for travel in East Pierce County. We have many corridors that travel north-south, but few that travel east-west. A new road extension at 128th Street East could be built without taking homes and without stopping traffic for construction. Finally, the progress of our country was made possible by the expansion of our transportation systems. I encourage you to be a part of history, commission a study of the 128th Street east-west connection, and support the developments in East Pierce County by creating this new corridor. Thank you.
Thank you, Celeste. Thank you for being with us, and thank you for the information. Cynthia Frederick? Welcome.
So welcome, council. My name is Cynthia Frederick. I'm the CEO of Progress House, and I am the third-generation CEO in my family. So Progress House is a work training release. Up until recently, well, we're still in partnership with Department of Corrections. We've been with them for over 40 years, and we're transitioning. So we are still in the building at 5601 on Sixth Avenue, and we're really here to thank the council for all the support that we've had in that building. I grew up in that building. We used to have, before my father started the work release, we used to bring people into our home. This was our ministry, and we've done this from our family for over these 50 years, and we continue to do that. But in our transition, we realized that this work really belongs to the community. It's the work of the community. And it was a great day to be here today with the honoring of all of the cultural aspects of what Pierce County has to offer, and we want to continue that. And we will be presenting the council with our plan forward, and that is Palliver. Palliver is a West African tradition. It's important for us as Black Americans to also go back and understand our history and our culture and to bring that forward and to connect that with our people of color. And we plan to do that in this building, in this sacred place for us that has been so much a part of our, of our family and our community. So we just want you to be aware. Again, we want to thank you for all the support we've had over these years, and we just want you to be aware of what we're planning in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Thank you for being with us. We appreciate learning about that. Anyone else in chambers wish to provide comment or community forum? Please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
My name's Ken Paulson. I wanted to open people's eyes to what's going on across the country. We're in a state of progressive failure. So many illegals are coming in that hospitals are having to write off billions of dollars, I recently read. And illegals are cartel members, murderers, criminals, rapists, undercover military-aged soldiers from foreign countries, besides all the other foreign countries. Recently read, there was 37,000 military-aged Chinese nationals. What are they doing? Taking a boat over here and then coming up from Mexico? This is happening on purpose. I used to think, oh, this is stupid. How could somebody be so stupid to do this? Allow this? But then I realized it's on purpose. Somebody has a plan to destabilize us, and they're implementing it. People don't realize that. It's going to hit them right in the face when they're all activated. You can kind of figure what that means. Nobody says this. Somebody needs to say it. It's not stupidity. It's a plan. I call the administration the O Biden administration on purpose. Whoever's doing this hates America, hates United States citizens. People need to open their eyes to what's happening. One of these days, I don't know when, they're going to come and bust down somebody's doors somewhere, just like they did October 7th in Israel. That's what they're going to do when they're activated. Thank you.
Is there any other member of the public wishing to participate in community forum here in council chambers? Not seeing any. Mr. Winesbury, anybody in our Zoom room?
Yes, sir. For any members of the public who wish to provide comment, press the raise hand icon on Zoom or star nine on your telephone keypad. And it looks like we have one hand at this time. BDA, please state your name for the record.
Hi, actually, this might be the wrong place to say this, but this is Amy Boucher. I was appointed, I would set the three o'clock timeline of the agenda. And I just wanted to say thank you for Councilmember Morell and the rest of the council for appointing me to the Pierce County Landmarks and Historic Preservation Commission. I had some technical difficulties, and so I was patiently waiting to say thank you. And I have my hands in all kinds of things, Buckley being one of them. Buckley Downtown Association, that's what BDA stands for. I didn't realize I actually logged in to our Zoom account. So my apologies for that. But yeah, I have, you know, from economic development, community development, historical and cultural preservation in Buckley and surrounding areas. Oh, can you hear me?
We can hear you fine.
Oh, okay. I know I'll be an asset to the commission, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to serve in this capacity, preserving our history and in Pierce County, especially in District 1. I'll definitely represent the seat well as well. I'm excited to, the opportunities that we have before us and want to be a part of helping tell the story, create connections, and in some cases reconnect, preserve the spaces and places, honor the people who helped build what we have today. I believe that historic preservation has social and economic value, and I am passionate about connecting these through placemaking strategies and building strong partnerships across the county and beyond. So definitely looking forward to building, bridging gaps and building partnerships and really building that relationship with our local tribes in Pierce County, Muckleshoot being one of those, as well as Puyallup. So definitely thank you for the opportunity and looking forward to what's to come in the coming, coming time to serve.
Thank you, Amy.
And we have no other hands at this time, Chair.
We see no further hands. We're going to close the community forum portion of our meeting. We thank all the community members who have brought new ideas and education to us and for the many partnerships we have with so many of you. Amy, we did, at the top of our meeting unanimously confirm your appointment to the Landmarks and Historic Preservation Commission. So thank you for your willingness to serve, and thank you again to all the community members for the, the good education. We are at Other Business and Announcements. We have one brief presentation. It's about the Working Families Tax Credit presentation. We have Perla Gamboa, Outreach and Community Partnerships Manager with the Washington State Department of Revenue here to share information about how community members can take advantage of the Working Families Tax Credit program. Perla, welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone, and we have some slides in there in your program. My information is there, so I'll just walk briefly through some of the slides because I know that we don't have a lot of time. Can we go to the next one, please? We're excited to talk about this program, the Working Families Tax Credit. It's a refund to Washington workers, and it was passed in House Bill 1297 in 2021 due to the work of community organizations, a coalition that was formed to make sure that this program was passed to stimulate local economy, economic activity. We promote rational equity in our services, and of course, a lot of research has been done on the importance of tax credits to help families in need and families that are low to moderate income. Next one, please. So our program is a cash refund to low-to-moderary-income individuals and families. This year, the max amount is $1,255. These are cash payments, depend on the income of the family and the number of qualifying children, if there are qualifying children, because it's also open to people that file their taxes as single individuals. We are currently accepting applications, and something interesting is that applications for this program are accepted up to three years for each year. Next one, please. To be able to qualify for the program, we use the federal income tax return from the previous year. The reason for that is the Washington State, we are providing this refund based on sales tax. But of course, because we don't file taxes for the state, we require their federal income tax return attached to the application. This program is open to families or individuals that can use their social security number to pay their taxes or to individuals that do not qualify for a social security number but that pay their tax, their taxes every year using their ITINs. This is the individual taxpayer, taxpayer identification number that the IRS provides to people that do not qualify to have a social security but that contribute to our economy by paying taxes every year. People that qualify for the EITC normally will qualify for our state program for working families. And one of the requirements, because it is based on sales tax, is that the person has lived for a little bit more over half a year, that's 183 days in the previous year, to qualify. For a person to, if they have qualifying children, there's no age requirement. However, if they do not, there's an age requirement from 25 to 65 years old to qualify. Next one, please. Here are our numbers. As I mentioned, it depends on the number of children and if we file as single individuals or married filing jointly. And so, for example, as you see in the chart, for a family that files their taxes married, filing jointly with two children, the max amount that they, or the max income for the year is $59,478, and the max amount that they will receive is $940 for the year, for 2024. And these amounts change every year. Next one, please. We have a lot of information on our website. Information is available in several different languages that you can see there. And something that is really, we mentioned this, that people can go to our website, wftc.wa.gov, and see if they qualify just by answering a few simple questions. They don't even have to provide their name, and then they will make an informed decision whether or not they want to apply. What we see is that a lot of people, both for the federal EITC and now with this program, they don't really apply because they think that they do not qualify, and that means that we're leaving money on the table, and that's not something that we want to do. Next one, please. So to apply, people can either apply online through our website in myDOR. Everybody that has families that are receiving other type of services and benefits like SNAP or TANF, they qualify for our program, and they already have a SOA account, Secure Access Washington account, so that they can apply. Also, when we file our taxes, we're our tax preparer. Also, when we file our taxes with our tax preparer, we can ask to submit an application now for the state of Washington for working families. We have ways to apply through our community partners. These are grantee organizations that have, that are helping people apply for free, and of course, we can apply on paper in several different languages that are listed there. Next one, please. To apply, we will need the federal tax return from the previous year, either a social security number or an ITIN, and just general information, ID, an address. Regarding address, we are also accepting for our community members that are in a situation of homelessness. We also accept addresses of a community organization that can verify that they live in the state of Washington. We can do direct deposit, or a check, or a debit card, and what this means is that if a person or a family, if they qualify for the federal tax return and also for Washington State through working families, they may be receiving two separate checks or two direct deposits in their bank account, one for the federal and one from the state of Washington from the Department of Revenue. Next one, please. I don't need to tell you this. Research shows how important it is, tax credit for our families that are trying to make ends meet. We do not ask what people will use their refunds for. They can use it for whatever it is that they need in their families. Next one. And some of the communication that we've done, it's there. Language access is very important for our program. We have a community partner toolkit on our website, and as I mentioned, we are working with 27 grantee organizations. Five of them are in Pierce County. And actually, one of them is the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center, which was just present in the meeting today, along with four others in Pierce County, and in the state, 27 community organizations working with us. Next one, please. And I have some information and data for Pierce County. So the first chart is at the state level, how much we have refunded already in the second year of the program, as you see there, and the average amount per application that is refunded. And for Pierce, I got this information to prepare for, to provide to you. 17,700 applications have been approved, and we have issued refunds just in Pierce County. This is especially important for me and close to my heart because I lead a group of specialists in the program throughout the state, but I reside in Pierce County in Tacoma. Next one, please. Just our information there, our email, something that we've seen in all the presentations that we've done to city and county councils, that we would like to ask for your help with, is to include our information in the newsletters that you send, that you send usually to your, the members of your community. We see that that has really an important effect in spreading the word and helping people apply. Our applications are open year-round, so even if tax season has passed, for working families, people can apply year-round and have up to three years to apply. Thank you.
Perla, thank you, and that is exactly why you are here. Thank you for accepting our invitation. You are here because we intend to clip this video of your presentation for our many communication channels, including our newsletter and various communication channels, to help get the word out to Pierce County families about the Working Families Tax Credit. We'll turn this into a video and a short clip to get the community education out, so thank you for doing that. And thank you for the Pierce County-specific information, the over 17,700 Working Families Tax Credit applications that were approved, pumping $13.3 million back to those families to do what they know they need to do best to stabilize their families. So that's really great. Thank you for giving us the Pierce County-specific numbers. Are there questions or comments for Ms. Gamboa from council members? Councilmember Hitchens.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for bringing this opportunity before so we can do a little learning together. Ms. Gamboa, I have two questions. The first is around kinship care, so families, like grandparents, great aunts, are they eligible if they're taking care of someone else's child, a relative's child, as far as this goes?
They are. The requirement is that, because we need to receive their federal tax return, that they have claimed those dependents in their tax return.
Okay. That's good to know. And then my second question is around people receiving these funds who are on things like TANF or have housing vouchers. Is this considered income, which could then put them at risk of being eligible for those social safety nets?
Excellent. It is not considered income. There will not be any repercussion in the other benefits that they are receiving.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Great questions. Thank you, Councilmember Hitchens. Any other questions? Well, again, Ms. Gamboa, thank you for being patient. Thank you for making time to be with us to help us educate our community members. This is still a relatively new program of the state of Washington to get more money back into the hands of low-income folks. And as you indicated at the end of your presentation, anyone can request a similar community presentation to their community, maybe in a different language or English, and to do some one-on-one technical assistance and outreach. So you've included your contact information here in the presentation. Any community-based organization, neighborhood organization, civic organization like a Kiwanis Club or a Rotary Club could make the request for a presentation to learn more, to help get the word out so more families can be aware of this. So encourage anyone watching to take advantage of that. The Department of Revenue is serious about their invitation to be invited to come speak and get the word out.
We are. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there any other business or announcements by council members? I don't see any. Ms., Long, is there any other business for council this evening?
Not today, thank you.
Seeing no other business before the Pierce County Council, we are adjourned.